We should get a corral, so you're ready to go.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of Newton County Board of Education to order. If you will, please join me for a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Please join me. Let's declare.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Fury, we have some special recognition this evening?
Yes, we do. We've quite a lot of recognition this evening. But first off on this evening's agenda is a special performance. Wesley Rains. Several of our board members have requested that we invite Wesley Rains, a senior at Eastside High School, to one of our meetings to perform. Throughout his high school career, Wesley has been recognized on a yearly basis for both making, for making both all-state band and all-state chorus. He is obviously a very, very musically talented student. Tonight, he is going to perform a song on the French horn. At this time, I would like to invite Wesley Rains to please come forward. Good evening, Wesley.
I think Ms. Henderson Baker will be very disappointed because she is one of his fans.
Yes.
And she is at Newton High School, actually, this evening presenting an award and will be joining us as soon as she can, so.
Yes. So she's gonna be, I was thinking the very same thing. It'll be recorded, so we'll be able to watch it on the tape. But thank you, Wesley. Thank you, Mom and Dad. We're so very proud of Wesley and certainly proud of both of you as educators in our school system. And Wesley, great job. It was beautiful. I don't know the name of the piece. What was the name of the piece?
Elbow, cleats, spider, arm, arm.
Okay, there you go. So, very good. Great job, and thank you for coming this evening and sharing that awesome talent with us. We greatly appreciate it. Next, we have a special presentation by the Covington Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. In celebration of May Week, the sorority is supporting the Newton County School System book bus. At this time, I'd like to invite the Covington Area Alumni Chapter President, Sarah Lundey, to come forward to present the check to our board vice chair, Ms. Abigail Coggan.
This is just the souvenir. But on behalf of the Covington Area Alumni Chapter, in our May Week activities, where we support stakeholders in our community, and we need, the school system is one of our larger stakeholders in education, we would like to give you this check, four or five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate the contribution to the efforts of our community, of our school system, to ensure that students have books during the summer and during their breaks. And the book bus, for those of you who may not be aware, it actually travels throughout the community. And it stops, and kids are allowed to get on the bus, and they can pick the books that they want to read, and they get to add them to their libraries. And that is made possible by donations from people in our community and organizations like the Covington Area Chapter. So we really appreciate you, and thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you so much. And thank you for Nina Sam's.
Yes. Yes, we're very fortunate to have Ms. Sam's, no doubt. Finally, tonight, we have numerous students in attendance deserving of recognition for their recent accomplishments. And we'll begin with our students who won first-place awards at the recent Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition. Griffin Risa recently hosted the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition, where the Newton County School System students competed against students from Butts, Fayette, Henry, Lamar, Pike, Spalding, and Thomason-Upton School Districts. Of the thirteen first-place award winners, six of them were from the Newton County School System. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Abigail Coggan, our vice chair, Carter Williams. Carter is a kindergarten student at Oak Hill Elementary School, and he won first place at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with his submission, Minecraft. We also recently learned that Carter won an honorable mention award at the state's Young Georgia Authors Competition. Congratulations, Carter. Malachi Adashina? Is it Adashina? Did I get it right? Adashina. Malachi, come on up. Malachi is a first-grade student at Middleridge Elementary School, and he won first place in the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with his submission, Whales. Congratulations, Malachi. Amaya Davis. Amaya is a second-grade student at Porterdale Elementary School, and she won first place at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with her submission, Lions. Congratulations, Amaya. Caroline Patil. Caroline is a fifth-grade student at Mansfield Elementary School, and she won first place at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with her submission, A Soldier's Journey. Caroline also won an honorable mention award in the state's fifth-grade Young Georgia Authors Competition. Congratulations, Caroline. Maggie Camfield. Maggie is a junior at Eastside High School, and she won first place at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with her submission, The Garden. Congratulations, Maggie. We also had one more winner who could not attend this evening due to a prior commitment. Bailey Smith, an eighth-grade student at Indian Creek Middle School, won first place at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Competition with her submission, Dora Rivquina, A Gruesome Finale. Let's congratulate her on a job well done as well. Next, I'd like to recognize several of our high school students who have recently been named Governor's Honors finalists. The Governor's Honors Program is a four-week summer instructional program at Berry College in Rome, Georgia, for gifted and talented high school sophomores and juniors. While enrolled in this prestigious summer program, students will have the opportunity to major in their selected instructional area with subjects such as agricultural science, communicative arts, dance, engineering, mathematics, music, science, social studies, theater, visual arts, and world languages. All of those are available. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Coggan. Marina Busby. Marina is a sophomore at Eastside High School, and she will major in world languages, specifically Latin, at the Governor's Honors Program. Congratulations, Marina. Sophia Hawley. Sophia Hawley. Sophia is a sophomore at Eastside High School, and she will major in communicative arts at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Sophia. Miranda Johnson. Miranda is a sophomore at Eastside High School, and she will major in theater performance at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Miranda. Miranda Litke. Miranda is a junior at Eastside High School and the NCCA, Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and she will major in engineering, mechanical design, at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Miranda. Sarah Owens. Sarah is a junior at Newton High School, and she will major in theater performance at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Sarah. Kai Rivers. Kai is a junior at Newton High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and she will major in communicative arts at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Kai. Joy Sharp. Joy is a junior at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School, and she will major in social studies at Governor's Honors. Congratulations, Joy. And at this time, I'd like for all of us just to take a special moment to congratulate again all of our Governor's Honors finalists for their outstanding accomplishment. The last group of students to be recognized recently won awards at the 2018 Georgia Science and Engineering Fair. These students competed with students from across the entire state of Georgia. When I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Jeremy Mitchell. Jeremy is a seventh-grade student at Newton County Theme School, and he won second-place honors in the biomedical and health science category with his project, What Drink Best Replaces Lost Electrolytes in Athletes? Congratulations, Jeremy. Braxton Buff. Braxton is a sophomore at Eastside High School, and he won first-place honors in the behavioral and social sciences category with his project, How Diction and Syntax Influence Behavior. Congratulations, Braxton. Sarah Schleter and Madeline Farrell. Was it, Madeline's not here. Is it Sarah? Is Madeline's last name Farrell? Is it Farrell? Okay. So Sarah Schleter and Madeline Farrell. Sarah and Madeline won third-place honors in the biomedical and health sciences category with their project, Insulin Pump System. Congratulations, Sarah and Madeline. And once again, I'd like to take the liberty to congratulate all of our state science fair winners on a job well done. Ms. Coggan, at this time, we have finished our recognition portion of the meeting.
All right. Join me in giving them a big, all our winners tonight, a big round of applause. In Chairman Turner's absence, I would like to continue his tradition and for all the parents and family and friends to stand of these students. Students, we need to give them applause because without their support, you wouldn't be where you are today. So please join me. All right, now is the time if you would like to leave. Welcome. You are welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting.
Mr. Rains. Mr. Rains.
Wesley.
I am so, I was flying from Newton High School to get here. Like so much so that I'm up here sweating. I do apologize that I missed you because I wanted to see it, but they told me they recorded it. So I am going to watch the recording. Ow, he could have. So I apologize.
Hello?
Okay, we got you. So just hang on a second. We're getting ready to start.
Okay.
You're live, so we'll be ready to start in just a second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have any public participation this evening? All right. We would like to just take an opportunity. Ms. Fury has just called Mr. Turner, and we wanted him to be present to participate in tonight's board meeting. And by state law, board of education members have the ability to participate in meetings if they are out of jurisdiction. I believe it's two times a year, in a calendar year. And because of some of the things that are on the agenda for the evening, we felt it was imperative that Mr. Turner be able to participate. So hence, you will hear him in just a few minutes, I believe. So, all right. So let's see. Moving on in the agenda, on our agenda for the evening, we need approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Henderson Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
A motion was made by Mr. Bailey and seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor? Aye? There might be a little delay there. All right. Superintendent's reports. We have, let's see, operations. Mr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, in the operations report, in item one, the financial statement is presented for your review, and item two, the operations report under business and finance. The special purpose local option, sales tax for education, ESPLAS IV distribution for March was $1,41,612, which is an increase of $130,558 from the previous month. The average for the first 38 months of ESPLAS collections was $933,317. And number two, the title add velorum tax collection for March was $116,993. And number three, the rate of expenditures is within budget and less than last year with 78.28% of funds expended compared to 79.87 in fiscal year 2017. In procurement, Corey Craver, procurement and facilities planning specialist, was awarded the Darrell Strange Outstanding Member of the Year Award by the Governmental Procurement Association of Georgia. Mr. Craver has served in numerous leadership roles and is the current education chairperson responsible for coordinating and managing the professional development programs and offerings for the association. So we're very proud of his accomplishments. In pupil transportation, the average cost for diesel fuel was $2.60. On page two of the operations report, school nutrition. School nutrition staff attended the Georgia School Nutrition Association meeting on April 12th and received two awards. First, the gold level recognition for the district Shake It Up Award. This award recognizes school nutrition programs that accept the challenge of serving locally grown foods, providing nutrition education, and high-quality customer service. The second award was the Rising Star Award for GSNA District Four. The Rising Star Scroll Award recognizes school nutrition programs that begin or reconstitute their GSNA local chapter, elect officers, selects bylaws, completes a community service activity. The school district chapter achieved all of these goals during the 2017 school year. And that completes the operations report.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our curriculum instruction report.
For curriculum instruction and technology, number one, new teachers to Newton County were recognized on May 1st at the new teacher recognition dinner. There were approximately 150 teachers in attendance, and that was a very well-done program.
All right.
On page, on page two, number three, instructional technology specialists model lessons for teachers in classrooms during the month of April using digital devices such as Chromebooks, iPads, and laptops. Students use research tools such as Fakebook, Canvas, Office 365, and Discovery Education to study historical figures. These model lessons encourage creativity, note-taking, digital design, all in preparation for the social studies and reading milestones. And then finally, on page three, a group of fifth-grade students at Livingston Elementary School participated in a supply chain demonstration with the American Production and Inventory Control Society. Students participated in the whole group discussion, small group collaboration with community members in the field, and problem solved. The volunteers were amazed at this group's thinking and how well they articulated their thinking and problem-solving abilities. And that concludes the CIT report.
All right, thank you. Enrollment report?
In the enrollment report, there are currently 19,702 students enrolled, and that is compared to 19,686 in May 2017. And that concludes the enrollment report.
Thank you. All right, moving on. We have no old business. One?
Could I ask a question about the financial report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
In the financial report, page two, just in instruction line 1,000, I noticed, and I'm all saving some money wherever we can, but under the textbooks line item, I noticed we're about 19% out of a $3.3 million budget. I know we're in textbook adoption. Are all those, are all those costs going to be hit FY 18?
That recommendation uses FY 18 and, upon approval, FY 19 fund. So you'll have a recommendation tonight for textbooks.
And that'll take up the remainder of the budgeted funds?
That I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I can wait if it's the.
We'll know the amount in just a minute.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Barr on the reports? Okay. Moving on, again, old business, we have none. So we'll move on to our new business. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends that the board adopt a tentative budget for FY 19 for all governmental funds to be advertised in the newspaper before the approval of a final budget on June 19th, 2018. Attach our chart choices A through F for the general fund, which were presented to the board at the budget work session. The superintendent recommends chart B. Just a little bit of background about our budget. The budget for board approval consists of all governmental funds, which includes the general fund, state grants, special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service funds, school food service funds, school principal accounts, and the after-school program. Of all the funds, general fund is the largest as it includes all the functions required for normal maintenance and operation of the school system, and it is the budget that is controlled by state QBE funds and local property tax dollars. State grants include special needs pre-K, flow-through funds for the FFA camp and lottery pre-K funds. Special revenue funds are all of our federal grants. Capital projects include designated building programs. Debt service funds are required to pay off debt incurred through our building programs. The school food service fund is a proprietary fund, meaning that it should generate enough revenue in the program to offset all of the costs of the program. The school principal accounts are the funds managed at the school level for student activities. The after-school program is funded by fees paid by the parents for their child's participation. We appreciate all the hard work of the board in working through this budget process, taking the time to study the budget, and providing valuable input.
All right, thank you. We are scheduled to vote on this tonight, so do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? I'm sorry. All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion was approved by, or made by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Henderson Baker. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bailey?
Out of all of the charts, and with the recommended 7% fund balance being at $12.6 million in FY 2020-21, I don't see a chart. I only see one chart that reflects meeting that. I don't see a chart, I only see one chart that reflects meeting that, that recommendation. I would love to see us have another chart with other options that put us underneath the, the 7% fund balance recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If I can continue to discuss...
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished. You stopped, okay.
I felt like you were about to head to a vote.
Oh, no, 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 no. If you, I just, that's anybody else wants to have a comment or make any others comments.
Then I'll just finish up.
Okay, let, hang on, Mr. Turner, let Mr. Bailey finish.
Okay. Then, because I don't know if everyone can have, have the charts available to them, in front of them right now, but the chart A shows no budget adjustments, which puts us with the projected income at 2021, 20, uh, 2021 in the $16 million range, which is above the 7% by a good, a good, about $4 million, almost $4 million. And the next chart, and every chart following that, shows a 1% permanent pay-in, pay raise, or more pay raise, more percentage of pay raise. And I feel like the charts are reflecting either vote for a pay raise or don't vote for a pay raise. And I don't think that's quite fair in, in something that we should be voting on. I think, I am all for teachers receiving a 1% pay raise. I, I wholeheartedly think that's the best thing to do. I would love to see that come out of current budgeted funds rather than increase our spending. So that's why I would ask for other options than just one that puts us above the recommended fund balance, with all the remaining ones showing us below the recommended 7% fund balance, which I think would put us in precarious spot were the tax digest to change. I think it would be prudent and show good stewardship to be above that 7%. And that will conclude my statements unless...
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Turner?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I think it's incumbent upon us to really consider chart B. I think and accomplish what we need to accomplish, number one, given the teachers and the other staff, members, including all employees, the 1% raise, trying to get them back to where they need be, as well as keeping us within the ending fund balance that we're required to, it's recommended, let's have it. So I don't see any other way that we can accomplish that other than approving, uh, chart B.
Just for the record, chart B, I want to make sure everybody's clear, chart B does not put us within that range of 7%. Chart B puts us below the 7% by two, over $2 million. So I think that's where we need to have more options rather than one that puts us well above the 7% and all the rest of them below.
Okay, Ms. Henderson Baker?
Okay, so, and, and Mr. Bailey, I understand what you're saying, but with all due respect, in this school system, we do a lot of training to our staff, to our staff that are in the classroom, and an exceptional amount of training. So we really train them on professional development, being able to deliver curriculum to the students and stuff like that. And once they get all of this training from our awesome school system, they always leave us because we do not pay comparable amounts to, when they can go to a neighboring county. So we're training, we're educating them, we're giving them all this development, and then they often leave us because we cannot keep them, we cannot retain them. And if we cannot retain them, then we're constantly recruiting people that have to start all over again, we have to train all over again, and then we spend, again, a substantial amount in training and educating and providing that professional development. So that's one thing. So I think in order to keep those people that we have trained, that we have really put them in owning what it is that we are trying to deliver, the strategic plan, the mission of our school and stuff like that, we have to be comparable where they will stay with us. The other thing is, when we look at trying to cut certain things and trying to do certain things, we end up doing a disservice to our students a lot of times. And what I mean by that, we can say, let's cut some of the curriculum stuff. Let's cut some of the training stuff. Let's cut textbook adoption. Let's cut some of the roles that are be done, that are being done by the executive leadership team or within the school system. But some people have roles where they're doing more than one job in the first place. Again, so we're tiring out people. And so we have to look at, you know, what it is that we could, what can we do to keep them? And so the year, and I understand by 2020 and 2021, you're looking at that amount. So there is a difference of about $2 million during that amount. But a lot can change in those years, and so there is the unknown. But what is great about the unknown is that we have the opportunity next year, if we don't see things changing, to go ahead and do what you're saying. So we have the opportunity, we have years, a space, to be able to make adjustments should we need them. But that, that's the thing with the unknown. But if we don't act upon it right now, we end up losing the people that we have trained that are able to get our students to where they need to be. Because they do, they get trained, and then they go somewhere else.
Well, to answer the first point, I want to be very clear that I am for a teacher pay increase. So everyone hear me on that. I am for a teacher pay increase. I just don't think it has to be the way we've outlined it here because our expenses, if you look at the charts, our expenses go up. So it's not like the only thing we're increasing is pay for teachers in chart B. There's other items that have been increased, and then we're asking for now, in chart B, C, D, E, F, for a teacher pay increase. I'm saying those increases happen somewhere. Let's give the teachers the 1% pay increase and find that somewhere in the budget without changing the expenses. What we're doing is we're spending more money. Now, I know you feel it's laughable.
No, I don't feel it's laughable.
That, that I make, at least make the point, because I don't feel like, um, I don't feel like that they were doing our due diligence year after year if the expenses are going up year after year, because they have. The tax digest is going up, yes, but so are our expenses. And as our expenses continue to go up, where's the cap? Where do we stop? And I don't see where that's happening. I see where we just continue to spend, and we continue to add these raises. At some point, should we need to learn from what happened in 2008, which I know you guys experienced, and many of you experienced it. So I'm not, I'm preaching to the choir to some degree that I just don't want us to go, I don't want us to get to 2020, '21, and this be a reality that, that something has happened and we are not prepared financially because we made decisions in 2018 and 2019 that, that we didn't learn from our mistakes. That's where I'm standing.
And I understand that, but that, and that's why I'm saying there are, there's time to adjust it should you need to before you get to 2020 and 2021. And on the flip side, education is constantly changing. We can look at tests and assessments and see that that's different every single year. And so if we want to be competitive, not only with our teaching staff, but we want our students to be competitive, and I got two students. And I want them to be able, when they graduate from here, compete with everybody else out there in whatever college they choose to go to. If not, compete, be better than them. And so with that being said, you cannot sit there and say, let's cut certain things in the budget. And those certain things may be things that are going to help our students become better educated, that are going to keep them 21st century ready.
I do, and I, and I understand.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bailey, I, I agree with most of the things that you're saying. But the key component on this, with helping me make this decision, is that, one word, this is a tentative budget. And we have another shot in November to find any findings that we have and make the adjustment. I agree with you, we can adjust your concerns by, I advocate it, since I've been on the board, that we should be building the budget bottom up, analyzing it bottom up, not from the top solely on salaries. That's the approach that we take. So I'm supporting this superintendent recommendation based on the fact that revenue is uncertain, that another opportunity in November to do, and that we are going to do a better job of analyzing the budget, budget from the bottom up. That's, that's the way I stand on it.
And I, and I agree with that. I, I think that's an excellent approach. I'm sure you guys are working that way. I just want to, I, I know for the past several years that I've been a part of this, and I know I'm kind of new to this, but, you know, I keep getting pointed to the 7% fund balance, 7% fund balance, this is kind of a...
It's recommended, yeah.
I understand recommended, and I just want to make sure that we are consistent every year when we use that number and we start saying, this is how, this is the benchmark in which we make decisions on, because if this year, that chart B's going to put us at a projected 2021 at $10 million, which is two, $2 million below that 7%, then what we're really saying is, 7% is really, I mean, let's just move that a little bit. And if, if you start moving your benchmark, then I'm just saying you're opening yourself up to potential, how do we make those decisions in the next year? And the next year, if 7% is not really 7%. And I understand there's factors, but it's, it's that way every year. Every year, we have these same things.
I would agree with you only in the, in the sense that, that this is three years down the road. So mo, most of the time, these are projections, three years down the road, lots of things would happen. So if you look in, in the, in the proposed chart B for '18, or for, I'm sorry, for '19, '20. So for '18, '19, your ending fund balance for '19, '20 is still well above that. And you've got two years that are in, in between that. So you've got plenty of time. We project out just because we project out. Lots of places don't do that at all. They budget this year and next year, and that's all. We just try to be transparent, we try to do our best work to see far into the future. But, but truthfully, when, when we looked at it in November, the same, the same number was there when, when the board voted to do a 1%, 2% pay adjustment. The same figure was $10, $10 million. So it, we, we know that that's about three years down the road, and lots can happen between then and now. The, the governor has, for the first time, fully restored the, the QBE. And so you've got a $1.9 million add-back that we didn't count on and we didn't have. And I'm proposing that we spend those dollars...
Spending what you got it?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm, right? I'm proposing that we spend those dollars to, in, in a, in a way that I feel is manageable. Because as you know, I've fluctuated between 1%, 1.5%, and we've had a 2.5% proposal as well. And we all, we all want to do well and do the right thing by our staff, not just our teachers, but, but everybody who's part of the organization. And, and I'm as financially prudent as the next person. But I know that these numbers are three years down the road and that there is time to make adjustments between today, the tentative budget, and then again in November. You know, we customarily have been able to make adjustments. We may not be able to do that this November, and that's perfectly okay. So I'm not trying to move the benchmark. The benchmark is still the benchmark. It's recommended. Some systems don't use 7%, some use different numbers. We have always used 7%, and we are well above that for two years in a row. So that's where I am.
Here's about the benchmark, and then I, I promise to be quiet, maybe, is that if this were, if this benchmark were set for CCRPI score, if this benchmark was set for number of gradu, our graduation rate, if this were, heaven forbid, a milestone benchmark, and we were, we were projecting that we would be below that, I guarantee you, we would be changing things quickly. Like, we would be talking about things, different initiatives, do also, but, but on the budget part, and I'm just, I want you to hear me out. I feel like we go, well, you know what, it'll, the digest will pick up. All right, you know what, we'll, we'll get there. And I'm saying, when you look across these charts, you freeze your expenditures, but I don't believe that. I don't believe we're going to freeze expenditures. And so that rate, really, you guys are saying, well, we'll check it out next year, we will. But expenditures will go up. At, at this rate, they will continue to go up unless we stop them somehow. I'm asking, when will we stop the expenditures so that we can pay our teachers, the, the, and, and our other staff, all the wages they are due, and that we are comparable in retaining all of our good people? But we're figuring out how to maintain expenses when it comes to the rest of it.
And, and that's, that's a great point. And, and it's important to point out that more, more than 87% of the budget is people. It's salaries and benefits. So the, the part that you're talking about is, is a small, is, is 12%. And so we look at that, and the people who look at that, those dollars are sitting right here in this room, and they will tell you that we scrutinize every single penny, every single time we go through the budget. We actually scrutinize it more than just budget, budget season, and we ask ourselves the questions, do you need this? Can we do without that? And to be quite frank, we've done without $110 million since 2003 in this budget. We've done without those dollars. We've also went from being the number one fastest-growing county in the nation to being among the top 20 most economically depressed almost overnight. And this board didn't have, with the configuration of the board at that time, there were no mistakes that were made at that time. The only mistake that was made was that the budget, the, the digest was based largely on homes and properties. And what's happening now is the diversification of the budget. It costs more than $250,000 per home to take care of one child's expenses. So a family buying a house at $250,000 with three children, two of those kids, the, their dollars are not included. So you, you've got that. Just last year, the graduate, Rutgers Graduate School of Education named 54 school systems in the nation that were identified as, as fiscally disadvantaged, right? And we, we were, we were one of them. We were one of those school systems. Not because the digest is not improving, but because the resources that we're using in the school system are not where they need to be now. So to cut those things, to ask the people in this room to look at the 12% and find the savings in there when we just were finally restored $1.9 million, doesn't make sense right now. But I'm willing and, and capable and able, and so is this team, to continue to scrutinize every single solitary penny because I too live in the community, and I too pay taxes, and I scrutiny, I want, I want to know that the team that you have in place as, as a central office team, and school principals, and the assistant principals and the, the school-level staff, do that. And we do. We take very seriously the dollars that we get from our community. And so, right now though, I think it's counterproductive given the fact that we did get that $1.9 million from, that's restored, that we earned anyway, that we've been without for many, many years. We did get it. So my, my recommendation keeps us under that 1.9, at 1.3 in terms of the, the salary adjustment. And then it picks up the rest in the benefit that our teachers haven't had the benefit of having for many years in terms of the 403B. We don't pay Social Security. So this is there, is a, is a benefit for our employees, and that's where that $1.9 million from, the way I see it, i- is going. But I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're asking, and I think the team here, I think they've heard you.
And I'm glad you said the things you did, because that needs to be noted. Those things do need to be said. People do need to hear all of that information. Not just me, everybody. So I'm glad you said it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And commendations to the team. Like, you guys have done a great job. I know you're cutting as much as you, not just cutting, you're controlling as much as you can. You're being good stewards with those dollars. Like, I'm not, I'm not challenging that. I'm asking the question today, just, can we, it's, it's not even do better. Can we, like, make some goals to where we, we're going to cap spending somewhere? Or can we at least put all the programs on the table? Because maybe we're chasing too many things and where our resources are spread thin because we're trying to do too many initiatives. It's possible. I'm saying, I don't know. I'm sitting in a seat, I don't, I'm not boots-on-the-ground like you guys are every day, and you're seeing all these things and the great work from every program that, that is implemented. But are there some things that we're chasing that maybe we can peel back on? That's not my decision to make, but it's my recommendation, moving forward, that we're at least somewhere, somewhere down the line, we're saying, we got to stop spending in order to prepare ourselves better for any sort of, you know, financial situation that could arise.
Duly noted.
And other, thank you. Thank you for sharing. I get it. But otherwise, I can, no, I can, I can, I can support this, particularly knowing that in November, we look at it again.
Yes.
And we, you know, we have discussions that, that hopefully propels into the, the future with some visionary thought processes that go into, when are we going to stop?
And, and just to point that out, I'm glad you brought that up because I think we're probably one of the only school districts in the entire state that actually has a physical budget look again in November.
And that's a lot of work, and as I knew it was...
It's not even about that, it's just because it's just that important.
And I agree.
It's just that important for the board to, to have an eye on it and for the school system to keep focused on that budget, and, and we do. And, and we will, again, and we will continue to do it as long as I'm superintendent. And as long as you want to do it.
I appreciate you guys listening, hearing me out, and thank you to the team.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay.
I just have one thing to say before we move on.
Okay.
I, I think it's, the hardest thing can be about what you're saying is that education is not a one-size-fits-all thing, solution. And that's the, that's the biggest problem. So, you know, I, I, I think that's just something to keep in mind, that child A may not be like child B, child B may not like child C and A.
And I'm not putting a dollar amount on any, any child.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, the motion on the table to accept the superintendent's recommendation of chart B. We, it's been motioned and seconded, so all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Uh-uh, uh.
That only counts as one.
I know, it just counts as one. All right, so... So, all right. So, any ayes? No ayes, so it passed 5-0. All right. Moving on to Item B.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreements between Newton County School System and the following providers to provide speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision services, and deaf, hard, or hearing services to students with disabilities in accordance with their IEPs for the 2018-19 school year. Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. Background: The district is responsible for obtaining, providing, or arranging for the provision of special education services as determined by the student's IEP. Newton County provides these services through contractual arrangements with outside agencies when the need for services for students with disabilities cannot be met through system employees. Hourly rates for contracted services are based on years of experience and level of degree obtained. NCSS is currently contracting with agencies to provide services for speech-language therapy and other related services as required by the student's IEPs. The contractual agreements with Blazer Works, Cobb Pediatric, Dynamic Therapy Solutions, EBS, EDU Healthcare, Staff Rehab, Atlanta Pediatric Therapy, Precious Minds, and Order Health are attached.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Ramsey? I guess there's none, so moving on to Item C. Thank you.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached contract for Flexible Creativity for 34 Days of Professional Learning. Background: The district and individual schools have utilized the services provided by Flexible Creativity to support the district's non-negotiable goals of increased student achievement and more effective teaching. The selected school staff will participate in coaching and modeling sessions that focus on effective professional learning communities, research-based instructional strategies, and building background knowledge in content areas. Additionally, teachers new to the district, as well as instructional coaches, will participate in sessions focused on continued implementation of research-based instructional strategies, building background knowledge, professional learning communities. The daily rate for the sessions is $3,500 plus travel expenses, all of which will be paid using Title II A funds. The total amount of the contract is $119,000 plus travel expenses. The agreement for services is listed on the attached page.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Warhol? All right. Thank you. Item D.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends the adoption of the Science Textbook Package from McGraw-Hill for grades K-5 totaling $537,873, and the Science Textbook Package from Pearson for grades 6 through 12 totaling $1,935,700. The total purchase is $1,631,380. Background: The Georgia State Board of Education approved the K-12 Georgia Standards of Excellence for Science in June 2016. These standards represent a pronounced shift from the previous Common Core Georgia Performance Standards. The Georgia Standards for Excellence for Science drive instruction. While the Common Core Georgia Performance Standards, with the Common Core Georgia Performance Standards, they expect students to identify, find, and relate. The Georgia Standards of Excellence expect students to obtain, evaluate, and communicate. Indeed, it now is expected that hands-on, student-centered, and inquiry-based approaches be the emphasis of science instruction. Enclosed, please find examples of the previous Common Core Georgia Performance Standards for Science and the new Georgia Standards of Excellence for Science. Elementary Science Program. The Curriculum and Instruction Department for Elementary Education strongly believes the products from McGraw-Hill will support teachers in helping all students access and master the K-5 Georgia Standards of Excellence for Science. The alignment to the expectations set forth in the standards is excellent, as is the rigor needed to master the standards. Leveled readers are a part of the package, and they not only support the science standards, but they give students myriad opportunities to read informational text. The McGraw-Hill package has a robust digital platform that includes access to student and teacher e-text, virtual labs, and field trips, and e-assessments. Finally, McGraw-Hill's Career Kids component makes connections to STEM careers with characters who represent males and females from various ethnic backgrounds and who may be a student with a disability, so that every student is able to see science in action from people with whom the students can identify. Enclosed, please find the components of the package from McGraw-Hill. The Secondary Science Program. The Secondary Science Textbook Adoption Committee recommends purchasing digital and print materials from Pearson for 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, middle school quest, biology, chemistry, environmental science, physics, human anatomy, forensics, zoology, and AP courses. The committee also recommended purchasing the physical science materials from Pearson at a later date for the 2020 revision. Pearson provides print and digital science instructional resources for grades K through 12 that work on tablet and computer devices. Various operating systems, including Android, Windows, iOS, Chrome, and Mac, are used to support the core and supplemental materials. Materials support the new Georgia Standards of Excellence for Science, which shifted to 3D learning. 3D learning integrates science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and disciplinary core ideas, so students view science as an interrelated world of inquiry and phenomena rather than a static set of science disciplines. Pearson provides Georgia Correlation Guides for 6th through 8th Interactive Science, 6th through 8th Elevate, Biology, Physical Science, Chemistry, Environmental Science, and Physics. This purchase does not include the physical science textbooks at this time, but those textbooks are a part of this adoption. Pearson's physical science textbook will not be published until 2019. The cost for these textbook purchases will be paid from FY18 and FY19 budgets.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I believe, is Item E. Mr. File.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'll try to keep mine short. The superintendent recommends the Microsoft license needed for the school system be purchased from Dell Marketing LP of Rock Rock, Texas. The state contract number listed encompasses multiple categories of software, including end-user enterprise software, Oracle software, databases, and Microsoft retailer services. The contract provided, provides access to lower overall pricing on Microsoft license and solicitations and other contracts that have been utilized in the past. Therefore, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to purchase the needed license from Dell Marketing LP utilizing the aforementioned statewide contract. Based on current needs, the estimated contract value is $143,822.34. This cost will be paid for of budgeted FY19 general fund dollars upon approval of the FY19 budget.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Ms. Lumens, you have Item F.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases where the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Uniform Sales of America, Atlanta Fixtures and Sales Company, Earthgrains Baking Company, Mayfield Dairy Farms. Background: Uniform Sales of America, the contract was originally awarded in May. On May 17, 2016, the vendor has met all contractual requirements and has agreed to continue their services under the current terms and conditions of the contract. The estimated annual contract value is $30,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY18 and FY19 school nutrition program funds upon approval of the FY19 budget. Atlanta Fixtures and Sales Company, the contract for Kitchen Small Wares, the contract was originally awarded on May 17, 2016. The vendor has met all contractual requirements and has agreed to continue their services under the current terms and conditions of the contract. The estimated value of the contract is $65,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 school nutrition funds. Earthgrains Baking Company for bread and associated items. The school system will utilize a State of Georgia contract to purchase bread and related bakery products. The estimated contract value is $130,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 school nutrition funds. Mayfield Dairy Farms for ice cream. The school system will utilize a Georgia Educational Cooperative contract to purchase the ice cream and associated products. The estimated contract value is $50,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 school nutrition funds. This concludes Item F.
Thank you. Any questions from Lumens? All right. Thank you. Moving on, Item G. Mr. Bar, or Dr. Bar, excuse me. Sorry.
Item G, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy, DO. That is Item G.
All right. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Garrett, I think you've got H, I, and J.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, before you for review, Item H. The superintendent recommends the contract for electrical services be awarded to Osborne Electrical Contractors of Covington, Georgia. The effective date will be May 21, 2018, and the expiration date will be May 20, 2019. Invitation for bids for electrical services was opened on April 18, 2018. Three vendors participated in the solicitation process. The vendors and their prices are presented in the table below. Upon evaluation, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to award the contract to Osborne Electrical Contractors, as they provided the lowest overall cost. The estimated contract value is $100,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY18 and FY19 general funds approval, upon approval of the FY19 budget. That conclusion.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I see a Covington group in there. It's awesome.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Moving on, Item A.
Item A. The superintendent recommends the contract for the construction of a softball field for Veterans Memorial Middle School be awarded to T. Mack Wilder and Associates of Tifton, Georgia. An invitation for bids to construct a softball field for Veterans Memorial Middle Schools opened on May 1, 2018. The scope of work consists of the construction of a new softball field located behind the school, and includes the installation of new sod playing surface, infield, dugouts, and sidewalk connectivity. Four vendors participated in solicitation process, and the vendors and their pricing are provided in the table below. Upon evaluation, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to award the contract to T. Mack Wilder and Associates, as they provided the lowest overall cost. The total contract value is $283,494.15. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY18 capital funds.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from board members?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay.
In the scope of work, you provided what's going to be done, completed. In that part in Section 3284-00, Page 7, you reference the, that upon completion of the project, that the contractor will winterize the system. I want to know, what is that? How are you going to do it? Is it air, water, or what? How do you go about it? I'm particularly concerned about it, because we have, from my personal standpoint, a poor record of winterizing, and at the same time, maintaining usage of the field. So, I'm concerned as to what and how you're going to do this one.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The winterization process for this particular location, the irrigation water is drawn from a retention pond on-site. So, the pump is above grade, and in order to get it through the winter without damaging it, it has to be drained of all water. And so, from a period of time in late November till early March or so, it's inoperable for that period of time.
That's what concerned me. Why are we going to build a $230,000 project? And when this project is not available to the end users, 24 months, I mean, excuse me, 12 months of the year?
Well, I would have to ask Mr. Berry, but I don't believe softball season extends into that period of winterization for the irrigation system. And Bermuda will also be dormant during that period.
Well, all of the baseball fields, not all of them, most of the baseball fields are warped during the winter, so they have early spring grass, and they usually, those that are concerned, will plant the ryegrass, and in the springtime, you got a nice, healthy, green field. Now...
Yes.
This is done in most school systems. I don't know why we're so unique, that we don't address that issue.
This is a softball field, though.
Well, so, you're telling me that at no time does that field is going to be used during the winter.
I have to, Darren, do you know the softball season schedule?
It's not, I mean, it wouldn't go into the cold, you know? If anything, the cold here is coming out of winter, I have to, and...
I don't know about the specific dates of the schedule. I don't think it goes into that.
Yeah, for middle school, it's the same time as middle school football, because sometimes at the middle school, you have the football game going, like at Cousins, I use, for example, football and softball playing at the same time. But the softball team, I know they ended right before football, the last football game.
And we don't typically oversee softball fields either, with Rye.
But it concerns me that you're using a retention pond for water, like you're doing at Newton High, and it's almost inoperable. So, why would we want to duplicate a function like that again? How can we tie into the water system?
We can do that.
Okay. Other question. You got a cost, I've changed the name, that you're wanting. It is apparent that you have a consultant, correct me if I'm wrong, that's doing the consultant work. Do you have anybody doing consultant work on this project?
For the softball field?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is that a cost?
Yes, it is.
If it's not a part of the job, and I see no bid for that work.
Okay. So, it is a part of the job. It's not included in this. This is just a...
Sorry, you say it's not included?
No, it is a part of the job. It's not included in what's before you for tonight. It's professional services, so it doesn't require bid under state law, and that work's been done for months. So, that answer your question?
No. I said, I got a budget that you're presenting to the board for $207,000.
Mm-hmm. $283.
But there's been a cost associated with this project that hasn't been published yet. I don't know anything about it.
Okay. Well, the total budget, in the budget last year, was $300,000 for this item.
But should I know what the cost of this job is going to be?
I guess we're consulting services more than $17,000, because that would put you over the 300, right?
Yeah. I don't believe they were, but I can get you that information.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question.
All right.
Just in relation to the school, like logistics-wise, where is this field located? Well, it's two questions, actually, but answer that one first.
It's next to the football field. If you know where the football field is, it's directly east.
Okay. So, then, my next question is, because football and softball are going on at the same time, and I know some schools, we would put in fields, we forget about parking. I'll use Newton High School as an example. You got baseball, and you probably got about 20 parking spots, and so, that parking is horrible. And so, where is the parking lot in relation to that, because football and softball would be going on at the same time?
So, there is a small... So, there is a, there's a small, maybe a 40, 40, 50-space parking lot directly adjacent to the fields, well, directly adjacent to the football field. There's, we're building some sidewalk for connectivity in the project. And then, the overflow parking would be-
At the beginning.
It'd be behind the school.
Okay. We always do that with parking, okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, moving on, Item, let's see, J. Mr. Garrett.
All right. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for the provision of natural gas to selected schools and facilities be awarded to Mansfield Power and Gas LLC of Gainesville, Georgia. The effective date will be June 1, 2018, and the expiration date will be May 31, 2019. Invitation for bids for the delivery of natural gas was opened on April 18, 2018. The proposal covers 13 accounts covered by the Atlanta Gas Light Company area. These are facilities that do not reside within the city of Covington or its natural gas jurisdictional authority. Three vendors submitted bids in response to the solicitation. A summary of the solicitation pricing is provided in the chart below. After review, it was determined the proposal submitted by Mansfield Power and Gas LLC offered the lowest cost to the school system. Estimated contract value is $65,000.
All right, thank you. Any questions from board members?
One other come in, I want to make sure that I understand the request, the consultant, engineer, whatever you want to call it, architect. You said the funds for the architect was paid last year?
No, I did not say that. That's several months ago.
Okay. But I'm viewing this as a project. The consultant should go in on this as a project, and it should be a total figure that you will present to the board. Can you show if it's already been transacted or transmitted? The line items, function code, that this was built from that architect?
I'm sure we can.
Would you do that, please, for the next meeting, or before?
Yeah, I think if we could get it out to us before the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll send it out to you.
Right. So, just the consultants, and any other parts of the budget that would be affected. All right. Thank you. And I guess we don't have any questions for Item J. Thank you. So, Item K, Ms. Sanders.
Good evening, everyone. In Item K, the superintendent recommends approval of the personnel items as outlined in executive session.
All right, thank you. We need a motion to accept the discussion is in executive session.
So, move.
First by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Bailey. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, thank you. Motion passes. Other matters of interest, we have the retirement dinner tomorrow night, May 10, 2018. I just want to say, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend. I have to go to my daughter's Beta Club induction ceremony, which is at the same time, so, you know, I didn't have much choice, so please tell all our retirees, give them my best. I think this is the first one that I've not attended the entire time I've been on the board, so. The One Newton Parent Engagement Recognition Program is May 18. Thank you. Dr. Thomas, yeah, there she is in the back. This is an event that was very successful last year, and I'm sure it will be again this year. And then, of course-
My RSVP.
And of course, our graduation ceremonies, May 25, 26. So, is there anything else? Ms. Fury?
No.
Board members?
No.
All right, well, and I have a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. And all in favor? Aye. All right, we stand up. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.